First Tufton Borough Town Meeting in my knowledge that's been, that occurs in May instead of the usual March. Couple of housekeeping items if I, well, this is normally the time when I identify the emergency exits. That's probably not necessary, but I do have a couple of announcements. First, state law says that the seated capacity within a tent, this tent is 90 by 60 by 90, the seated capacity, seated capacity shall not exceed 311. I don't think we're gonna worry about it. We have exactly 311 seats in this, in the tent right now. Should we fill up all those seats, then additional people, if they show up, would need to stand or set up seats outside the garage of the tent. These seats were set up yesterday by wonderful volunteers from the police department, the fire department, and Dave Cash from the school district. They were not set up initially to accommodate social distancing, but anyone who is uncomfortable with the location of their seat or the proximity with another citizen, feel free, we've got plenty of room here, to get up, to move that chair, sit any place that you're comfortable at, being said. I'd like to ask you to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please welcome Reverend Tom Christian, who's a Tufton Borough resident and a pastor who's gonna lead us in invocation this morning. Tom?
Good morning. Is this on?
No.
No.
That's the man you need right over there.
I know. They were all set now. That's a beautiful story. Thank you. Tufton Borough Town Meeting 2021. I've done 27 church annual meetings, a number of town meetings. I was on a zoning board appeals for like three years. And every time you get ready to do something like this at a town meeting or a church annual meeting, how many remember the Mickey Mouse Club as kids? Oh yeah, Annette, Jimmy, the whole crowd. It's that, you know the song, "Today's the day that's full of surprises, nobody knows what's gonna happen." And isn't that the truth that any of those meetings, "Up jump the devil." So it's, but we come here today, you know, and we've all been through so much in the last year, year and a half, and there were COVID fatigue, which is a reality, you know? We were coming out of this stuff like, "Oh, we gotta handle it, what's the town doing?" Everybody's worked so hard this year, and so just wanna come with that. So the words I have, the story, a guy named Dr. Lee Ronder, who was at Sandwich, the town meeting, 2003, so these words are not all by himself, some are, but I did wanna just listen, listen to the words because they are so profound and so cute for this day. Listen. Lord God and the universe, in our small town, we give you hearty thanks that we live in such a lovely place among such good neighbors. And so we come now as stewards of this heritage to do the business of our community, and we ask that you bless our work, give us the coverage of our convictions, but make us gentle with one another, respectful of views we do not share, mindful of the faint but humbling possibility that we just may be wrong. Give us wisdom and celebrate in us the blessing of brevity. Finally, O gracious and forgiving God, who laughs with kindly affection at our human foibles and pretensions, lay your restraining hand upon us when we have nothing to say but are overcome, but are overcome with the urge to speak. Bless us and keep us now and always. Amen.
Thank you, Tom. Today is Peacekeeper Appreciation Day, but it's also Armed Services Day, a day in which we honor all our current active duty servicemen. I'd like to go one step farther, and I'd like to ask everyone who has a member past, present of the Armed Services, Merchant Marine, anyone serving our country, Wax Waves, would you please stand so we can offer our appreciation? Registered voters who have checked in with the ballot clerks should have received a voting card. It's a blue voting card, which will ask you to raise, hold up when we conduct a vote. There are also three yes no ballots attached to it. If you don't, if you're a registered voter and do not have a voting card with three ballots attached, please check in with the ballot clerks in this corner. Those guests who are registered, who are not registered voters, and I'm sure we have some, those guests who are not registered voters in Tufton Borough, would you please raise your hand, just identify yourself? Thank you. All depend on your neighbors to watch over you and make sure you don't commit a felony by voting when you shouldn't. Cell phones, please turn your cell phones to off or silent. If you need to make a call, please move outside the tent, out of earshot, and do so. I'd like to thank Kyle Williams and his sound equipment for the marvelous work he did this morning. He was here very early setting up the sound, and we're much appreciative, Kyle, thank you. I'd also like to thank again Dave Cash, as well as the janitorial crew at the Tufton Borough Central School, who are so important in getting us all set together for this meeting. The rules of our meeting, the rules of this meeting are based on guidelines presented by the New Hampshire Municipal Association, the Secretary of State, and the Attorney General, with a few modifications by the moderator. They're not Robert Rules of Order or any other established parliamentary procedure. Know that the moderator rules or decisions can at any time be changed or overruled by you, the body of the town meeting. For your reference, these rules are printed in the Town Warrant, Town Report, on page 29. The rules of this meeting will be, all discussions should go through the moderator. Only registered Tufton Borough voters are empowered to speak at the Tufton Borough Town Meeting. However, the moderator may ask for permission from the meeting to allow a non-voter to speak. Speak only once to an article until everyone who wants to speak to that article has had the opportunity. Any amendment to a motion must be submitted in writing. Only one amendment to any motion will be allowed on the floor at one time. If there is a timely motion to end debate, I will ask for a two-thirds majority to agree. But even with such a vote, anyone who is standing at a microphone waiting to speak will be allowed to speak. A motion to reconsider a previous vote can only be made by a voter who voted on the prevailing side of the vote to be reconsidered. A motion to restrict reconsideration of an article may be offered at any time after a vote has been taken on the article. And all warrant articles are to be acted upon before final adjournment of the town If there are anyone who has any objection to the rules of the meeting, then we will To those who had speak tonight, please go to a microphone, there's a microphone, three microphones, center aisle and on the two side aisles, please go to a microphone, and when recognized, clearly announce your name before speaking. Please do not shun the microphone. If you wanna be understood, it's important that you be heard. State law now includes the fact that the minutes of the meeting have to reflect whoever made the motion and who seconded the motion. So once again, by identifying yourself clearly, you'll help our town clerk comply with the law. We have 20 articles to deal with this morning, therefore I ask all of you to be brief and stick to the subject matter under consideration. I would like to welcome once again Barbara Loman to our meeting today. She's here tonight in the capacity of Town Council. Thank you, Barbara. The Tufton Borough Master Plan Steering Committee, in the person of its chairman, Gary Quah, would like to say a few words about the community survey, which is underway today and through the month.
Thank you very much. All right, my name is Gary Quah. I'm the Vice Chairman of the Planning Board. About four months ago, the Planning Board made the decision to create a new 2022 master plan, okay? Now, our current plan is a 2006 edition, so we're about 15 years into it right now. We're mandated by the state, IRS 674-2, to create a plan typically within about 10 years, so we're a little late, better late than never. So we hired a company, Municipal Resources Incorporated, Meredith in Plymouth, New Hampshire, to help us through this process. They're a company that helps municipalities in many different ways, whether it be through safety, police and fire, through your assessments, and they do master planning, and they do a lot of it. So they've come on board to help us. We since then created a master planning steering board committee. It consists of four members and one alternate. I chair that committee. So today, when we look at the 2006 plan, which I mentioned was done around 15 years ago, that plan is about 140 pages. It's a big plan, it's like a mini encyclopedia. It was done very well at the time, it was very common for this part of New Hampshire, central and northern New Hampshire, to do that type of plan. There was a lot of hard work and effort that went into that plan, it was done well. Today, the new plan will be done a little bit differently. It'll be about 60 pages, about half that of the original plan. It's gonna have new techniques into it, all right? Where in the front of that plan, there'll be a lot of graphs and charts that can easily be read. We rely on that plan through the Planning Board, through the ZBA, through the selectmen, and many of the boards in the town as the direction of where we're going. We wanna make it easy for the town and the people who understand it. Behind that graphs and charts will be all the data and the substance will sit behind it. There'll also be links into that system, which will link us straight into the state, all right, may link us into the feds, federal government, and it may link us into the town, all right? Those things will help us save paper and keep us current. A lot of that data that we may look for, a town census report for Tufton Borough, for example, it's updated from time to time, so when you hit that, you'll get the most current copy. So over the next 10 years, when we look at this plan, those links will keep us current, all right? We will assign all the different departments, states, and times, when we'll expect them to give us new data throughout the 10-year process. And what will happen there, we'll keep updating. So when we hit the 10-year mark and do it again, our plan will be very current. The only thing we have to do is envision the plan. This plan is called a LEED, Living and Breathing Type Plan. It's not unusual out there, but it keeps us current, so it's much more sophisticated. So recently, you've got in the mail, you've got a postcard. The postcard looks like this. At the top of the postcard is four different items. One of those is the community survey, so you received a survey in the mail recently. And when you fill out the survey, you can put it in the envelope, the pre-addressed envelope that came with it, put a stamp on it, and mail it to Municipal Resources. You can not put a stamp on it, and you can drop it off to three locations in town. There's three drop boxes, one at the Pinecone Cafe, one at the Town Hall, and there's one at the Tufton Borough Free Library. If you choose to do it, the way I would do it is to go online, if you have that capability. If you pull up www.tuftonborough.org, the Tufton Borough website, you'll see a menu to the left of it. On the bottom, you'll see it, Master Plan, Surveys and Questions. You'll click on that, it'll bring you to a page that shows the survey online, you'll click on that, you'll take your survey, and off it goes. And that survey goes directly to MRI, Municipal Resources, all right? Below that, you're gonna see the Comments Board section. We have comments boards in town, there's six locations. And those boards are at the Melvin Village Post Office, Mirror Lake Post Office, they're at the Pinecone Cafe, they're at the Tufton Borough Town Hall, they're at the Free Library, Tufton Borough Free Library, and they're at the Recycle Center. So there's, there's a question on that board. And that question, you can answer and write your answer on the boards, or you can go on the service market online and answer that question. And those questions will be gathered, and they go directly back to MRI. We will do those questions once a week for six weeks. There's also Zoom roundtables that will happen. You can keep checking the website, you'll find out the dates and times of the Zoom roundtables, where you can go online with us, click on a link, and we can talk, discuss what you like about the town, what you dislike, and what you might recommend. We're doing pictures in Tufton Borough, picturing Tufton Borough, all right? There's a link in the Steering Committee that will allow you to pull up an email and attach pictures. So all you people that love your smartphones and love to take pictures, take some pictures. You're on top of Mount Shaw, take a picture of the, of the view. Take a picture of Dan Hoop Pond on the other side of the mountains, at the town beach where your kids are playing, the library, we have a beautiful library, take a picture of the library. Any picture that you like, we'd like to see. And those pictures will go to MRI, okay? So MRI is acting as a third party for us. They take and correlate all this data, and they chart it out. The Steering Committee will not see any of the data until they're done with it, and then we will huddle on it and create it. This is our vision chapter. This is the most important chapter that we're doing right now. It allows us to go forward elsewhere. So I ask that all of you, if you could do this survey, I really appreciate it, the committee appreciates it, our Planning Board appreciates us, and I ask you to help us out if you would. And I thank you very much, and we turn it back over to Dan. Dan, thank you so much for allowing me to speak, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Gary. Jack Widmore, the school district elections were finally completed this Tuesday, and Jack would like to report on the result of the school district elections.
Thank you. As you know, Effingham decided to hold their elections in May rather than in March, so we didn't have the official results until this Tuesday. The Member-at-Large position was won by Tim Eldridge with 1,446 votes, Steve Johnson 1,026. The open seat in New Durham went to Stephanie King with 1,310 votes, to 700 for Jason Hills. I ran unopposed in Tufton Borough, and Randy Walker ran unopposed for the moderator position. Article II, which is the Turf Field Capital Reserve Fund, was approved, 1,735 votes to 1,154 noes. The Repair and Maintenance Article passed 2,007 to 892, and the operating budget passed 1,869 to 1,006. This obviously has been a difficult year for the school district, starting with remote and hybrid model. We're now still with the remote option until the end of, end of the year, and, but we are fully in school, all our students are back in the classroom five days a week, so I really appreciate all the support that the school district had this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. We had our own election a little earlier, last March 9th. Actually, the March 9th election is the first half of this town meeting, and the first article was to choose all necessary town offices for the year ensuing. The following citizens were elected, and I would ask you to please stand when your name is read. Guy Pike, Select. Jennifer Coulter, Town Clerk. Penny Hugge and Chris Sawyer, Budget Committee. Susan Weeks, Cemetery Trustee. David Braun, Trustee of the Trust Funds. And Jamie O'Hagan, Library Trustee. Well, thank you very much to those who won, and thank you very much to all those who ran. Article II was a zoning amendment concerning the table of commercial uses, adding to the commercial use of outside storage. That article passed. Article III was a zoning question regarding driveway permits, and that article failed. Now we will move on in the second half of the town meeting to the balance of the article. As required by law, I will read Article IV, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,600,000 to build and equip a new police facility, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $685,742 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act. To authorize the selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds and notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity, and other terms thereof. Furthermore, to authorize the withdrawal of $664,258 from a previously established police facility capital reserve fund, $250,000 to come from an awarded USDA grant, that's the U.S. Department of Agriculture. A three-fifths majority is required to pass this bond issue, and is recommended by the Board of Selectmen, two to zero, and recommended by the Budget Committee, order three. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Move. Second?
Second.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to offer an amendment to the motion. The purpose of this amendment is to update the dollar amounts associated with the various funding sources for this article, since in the time intervening between when the warrant was signed and now, we have had more accurate information come forward. I will read the amended motion that I propose in its entirety, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,772,000 to build and equip a new police facility, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $557,112 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA Chapter 33. To authorize the selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds and notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity, and other terms thereof. Further, to authorize the withdrawal of $673,825 from a previously established police facility capital reserve fund, $341,633 to come from an awarded USDA grant, $200,000 to come from the undesignated fund balance.
I have a motion to amend, do I have a second?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion to amend Article IV? If so, I will read the motion to amend. This is the amendment, the amendment to the motion, is to change the wording of the motion to read, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,772,000 to build and equip a new police facility, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $557,112 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA Chapter 33. To authorize the selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds and notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity, and other terms thereof. Furthermore, to authorize the withdrawal of $673,825 from a previously established police facility capital reserve fund, $341,633 from an awarded USDA grant, $200,000 to come from the undesignated fund balance. Since you're ready to vote, we are voting on the amendment to the original Article IV, to replace the wording as I read. All those in favor of the amendment, which requires a simple majority, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your voting cards. All those opposed signify in a like manner. The eyes have it, and I declare the amendment is now passed. Which brings us to the main motion, which I think I just read. Barbara, is that, do I need to read this thing a third time? I don't think so yet. Okay. Is there further discussion on the amended main motion?
Okay. All right, we had to make a few changes. Over the course of time, our USDA grant money went up considerably. The costs, if any of you have been in the business of building anything, the cost of building things has gone up a bit. But we've tried to moderate the amount of money that we're gonna actually have payments on by utilizing the undesignated fund balance. We had the Treasurer, Jack Widmore, put together a payment scenario for us if we were to pass this bill. And financing over three years at an interest rate of 1.65% works out to approximately $196,000 a year. So you have three payments of $196,000, and then the police department's paid for, and that part is done. To flush it out a little more, we just finished paying for the ambulance that we financed, we did the last payment last year. We allocated $190,000 or thereabouts for that payment. So we're essentially, if you were to choose this article, you'd be exchanging that payment for the past ambulance, or the new payment for the past ambulance payment for budget purposes. One of the reasons, and I'm gonna diverge from our normal way of doing things, we put in two articles. One is this article that we're currently discussing, the second is an article for the same purpose, but instead of financing it, we would be raising $340,000 or thereabouts in taxes, and paying for it all in one year. So the choices, choice that we're putting before the voters is, do you wanna finance this project, or do you wanna pay cash and be done with it, as we did with the library? As we go forward, I'll try to explain a little better what, what the tax implications are, but in the next article, you'll see that we're utilizing a little more of the undesignated fund balance to mitigate any, any tax increase and still keep us with a significant balance in the undesignated fund. Lastly, there are ongoing grants that we're working on for power, lighting, lighting, energy efficiency, et cetera, all of which will, in order to the benefit of this particular building, and reduce the, our net costs. reduce our net cost. If we, just to go on for a second, there's been some discussion as to the size of the building and the scope of the work. The part of the driver behind the final design that we have is the USDA requirements, which have provided us with a significant amount of grant money. It's about 20% of the building cost, as far as I can see. Yeah. So if we were to reduce the building by 20% to satisfy the needs of some, that we shouldn't have such a big building, that would eliminate our possibility of getting that USDA grant and wouldn't end up saving us any money out of pocket. Secondly, Monday is Tax Day, final day to file your taxes. I don't know about the rest of you, but I send as much money to Washington as I need to, and I'd like to get a little back. And having lived here for 47 years, this is one of the few occasions where we actually have the opportunity to get some of the money that's sent to Washington back here to Tuftonboro. I'll turn it over to Bill.
Is there further discussion on Article IV as amended? Susan?
Susan Weeks. I asked this question the other day, I'm going to ask it again. If we don't approve this vote today, do we lose the grant?
So this grant that we received from the USDA is good for five years, which means that between now and five years from now, the monies have to be expended. Having said that, the grant was made based upon the design that was submitted and approved. So if we were to decide, for instance, that we want a different design for a police facility to present at a future town meeting for approval, the existing grant would not stay as it is. There would undoubtedly be an opportunity to apply for a grant again, but the existing grant is very much tied to the design that was completed. And one of the reasons that we're where we are today with costing on this project is that the final approval on the grant occurred within the last week. So we're very much dealing off a short time period after the approval. So the money doesn't go away, but the amount of the grant, as it stands, is very closely tied to the existing design that was presented to them and approved by them.
Are there questions and discussions on the amended Article IV?
Russ Barron, my question is, when was the last update on the cost and availability of contractors to pursue this building? Costs are going up, it's hard to find materials. If you do it yourself, you realize that you can't find things by place. So how realistic is, when was the update on the cost of this building, I guess?
So?
Go ahead. The last update that we got was on the 6th of May.
Okay.
So it's relatively recent. And just to clarify the process, we are looking at a fixed price, a guaranteed fixed price proposal at the end of the day. So these are the numbers that they're proposing.
And you have a contractor agreeing to do it for this price?
These prices have all been presented to contractors. We haven't awarded any bids because we haven't gotten an approval from the town, but that process will happen next week if this is approved.
Thank you.
Are there questions and comments regarding the amended Article IV? Yes?
Joy Perkins. You say that the grant was approved and it's good for five years. If we postpone building for, say, another year or two, are we still within the timeframe to use that grant?
Yes, we are. But as Bill mentioned, if the design changes, then we have to resubmit for the grant application.
I'm not talking about design changes.
But if we don't build it this year, we build it next year, all things remain the same as far as the grant is concerned.
Thank you.
I would offer that the only unknown at this point toward building this project at some point in the future will be the cost.
Further comments and questions regarding the amended Article IV? Gary?
Barry Ennis. I've got concerns basically on the timing of the project with the current situation we've been through in the last year. People's incomes have been affected, the price of materials is going up, and the price of gas is going up. I think a lot of the people in town could really use a little bit of a break, and maybe we should just defer this for a couple of years. Before we get into spending all this money and building this new facility, I think people need to take, catch their breath, and maybe we should be looking at other options also before we build this. I've always maintained, and I asked a question to the Select Board, has anybody ever looked into contracting police services in town out to the Carroll County Sheriff's Department, which they do, I know several towns in Maine, Bethel, Maine, for instance, 10 years ago, contracted out and got out of the police business and saved a lot of money. And it's an option. Has it ever been looked at? And do we need to do this right now, this year? I don't think so. And I'd urge everybody to vote no on the first two amendments, and vote yes on the third one there, and put some more money aside, but give us a break, and let's get through this pandemic completely, let people recover, get their jobs back, get their kids in school so they can go back to work. And there's no rush. We don't have the final number yet. It's not a good time, building-wise, to do it. What's the hurry? Thank you.
Are there any more questions or concerns? Yes. Barbara Selectman, Dan Duffy.
This is Dan Duffy. We've been after this for, I don't know how many years now. We've kicked it down the road, we're kicking a can down the road for so many years. We did, when I was the Selectman, all kinds of committees, everything. We had a plan for the fire station, for the library, and for police. It's now time to get this done and get a new police station in here. Do it now, please.
Any further questions or comments regarding the amended Article IV? Yes, sir?
This is Tom.
Yes.
Okay. My name's Joey Ewing. I was on the Budget Committee 15 years ago, whenever Dan said, you know, we had plans for the library and for the police station. I think it's time we did something about it. I would recommend that we defeat Article IV and pass Article V. It would be a savings in terms of overall for the community.
Could you elaborate on why we're using?
Your name, sir?
Bob Murray.
Thanks, Bob.
Second time. Would you elaborate on why we're using the Dearborn property and not the Gould property and keeping it as a, like a public safety facility? We have the opportunity to use the Gould property and sell the Dearborn property, where we could regain whatever money that property is worth. So we did a study with the architect of three potential locations for police facility. One was at Central Park, the Gould property. One was on the Dearborn property, which was purchased for this purpose. And the third was an expansion in a current location adjacent to the town offices. We selected the Dearborn location because it best fit the town's needs in terms of location, in terms of no further encroachment into the Central Park area at, adjacent to the fire station, and also to avoid encroachment into the town gardens if we were to expand at the town office site.
Any other questions or comments regarding Article IV as amended? Yes, Richard?
Name Dick Carey. In 2014, the Selectmen appointed a committee to study the need for a new police facility. A Selectman representative was part of the committee, a Budget Committee representative, and of course, the Chief of Police. In addition to the public officers, I was the first one selected to join the committee. And I think on the basis of being an architect, a 30-year career dealing with large projects, and very involved in construction management over the years. We did a very thorough study, submitted a report, 2014. And with the scope of the project determined, the program met and three options for how it would come to pass. One of those was the reuse of the library building in the event that we build a new library across the street. That was no longer a novel possibility, of course. The only real option we have now is to do a new building. Our cost estimate at the time for that building and the new one is essentially the same program, the same scope, the same size. The cost of the old one, six and a half years ago, is 1.3 million. Now we're at 1.7 million. I'm hearing arguments to postpone it again. As an architect, I have no confidence that construction prices are going to come down. We apparently are looking at a boom economy coming up. I have no confidence the costs are going to come down. What you're doing by postponing this is kicking it down the road once more with a probability, in my estimation, that costs are going to increase and the town is going to lose out once again. I'm in favor of the second option on doing this. I'm going to vote against the current motion and in favor of the next one.
So I guess I want to address Bob's question about the location, how it came to be. We looked at three locations, as the Selectman mentioned, and plus also one location, there were two options discussed. That was at the town, present town hall, they're expanding, or putting the building essentially in the town garden there. The cost essentially was the same, whatever location we had. But putting it at the town hall would have cost some of the parking lot there. Those who have attended meetings there know that sometimes a parking lot space is rather precious, and we would have lost quite a bit of that parking lot, not only during construction, but as, after the building was done. Likewise, if we were building it by the fire station, while there's plenty of land there, there's issues with how it would interfere with the fire department. We have a limited amount of access to that property through driveway permits, if you will, from the state. And it would have impacted the parking lot and the access to the fire station there. Furthermore, by having it at its own lot, the advantage is, down the road, should something need to be done, there'd be some options to expand there without impacting other town services adversely. The cost is essentially the same. And as far as overall project, both now and for the future, that was the most cost-effective looking forward. Thank you.
Any further comments? Yes, please, David.
Just real quickly, David Cash, Tuftonboro. Can we compare the numbers on Article V? Because they're going to change as well, because we're kind of comparing the two. The grant money will change, so the numbers there will change, so we can compare them evenly. We should crunch the numbers on Article V before we vote on Article IV.
Do you mind?
So without reading the article, the gross dollar need is $1,772,673,825 would come out of the police capital reserve fund. $341,063, which I could talk for, is going to come from the USDA. $471,370 would come from the undesignated fund balance, and $285,742 would be raised from taxes. So you'd have a one-year tax impact of $285,742. It's hard to say how it's going to affect the rate because we don't have our undesignated fund balance for 2020, because we don't have the audit and financial stuff. So we are going to have an opportunity in October to utilize some of that fund to mitigate tax increases, and that will be our job in October, obviously. And any money that we can bring into the project to offset costs between now and then will also mitigate any tax increase. As one Selectman, I'm more in favor of paying for it and being done with it, but that's just my position, and now you know the numbers are comparable.
Beverly?
Thank you, Dan. Hi, Beverly Bruce. Okay. First of all, I'm a very, very strong advocate for law enforcement and for all of the military that have served our country, and I thank you for that. I have a basic question. In reading the data that the architects put together, they say that they're projecting the population, thank you, they're saying that they're projecting the population over the next 21 years to increase to 110 people. Now, I don't know about you guys, but I'm not going to be alive in 2040. But my basic question is, how can we justify this project? How can we justify it? So I echo what Barry Ennis said. Let's defer it, let's evaluate what the actual needs are versus the wants. And we're in a position today where we dealt with a terrible pandemic, and to tax the Tuftonboro people and to address a project like this, to me, is basically unreasonable. And I'd like to hear from our, I'd like to hear from our new Selectman, Guy Pike.
Let's get through the people who are standing at the microphone. Gary?
Thank you, Dan. I am in favor of...
Gary.
Mike.
Keep getting that a second.
There comes Captain Microphone.
There was a reason, Gary.
I think we got it. All set? I'm in favor of this article, but I might add, it's...
I think we got it. All set? I'm in favor of this article. But I might add, it's-- I'm taking a deep breath in saying that. I had a different vision for our police department facility. It's not what we're voting on. But nevertheless, a lot of work has gone into this. And I do believe that a better argument can be made that we do need to do something as opposed to not doing anything at this time. But let me tell you why I'm in favor of the article. I'm in favor of the article because we are using debt financing. 1.96% is very, very low. And in my mind, when you can borrow money at that rate, but you can invest it and draw a lot more money, that's a time when you should act on the low interest rate. There is a time value to money. As Chip pointed out, if we vote for this favorably, the same level of expenditure, all other things being equal, will remain the same. This $190,000 will be substituted for the $190,000 that we're wrapping up on the ambulance. I sit on the Budget Committee, and one of our primary responsibilities is to see that the tax rates are as level as possible and at the same time, to see that the town has sufficient funding to provide the necessary goods and services that we all need. It seems to me that we're in a unique situation where if we finance this building at this time, we can achieve just that. And I think that that's probably one of the more important things to be concerned about right now. And I also think that using the financing will enable us to use the unfunded designated balance for other things that we desperately need. There were a lot of things that were put by the wayside by the CPI committee so that we could do this. So I would recommend that this particular article get passed. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments, criticisms?
Gary Quah? I don't know how many of you have been in the police station. It's a small office area, very crowded, very unorganized because it's too small. I don't know how they work efficiently there. They don't. If you've ever had a loved one, child, son, has had a problem, he has to go down to the police station and have a little talk. There's no privacy there. It's not right for them. The price of this building is going to go up every year. Despite what you hear today, the price has gone way up. They're going to go up again. Now is the time to do this, and we need to do it. This town deserves it, and the people of the town deserve it. I'm in favor of this article.
Are there any other further questions?
Just a clarification or a bit of information. The 2020 warrant total was $977,193. 2021, if you were to choose financing, the article in question, the total warrants are going to be $966,272. So to counter this notion that somehow we're growing without bounds, we're moderating all of our purchases, all of our buildings, towards a certain level of public participation in taxation. And I think we're doing a good job of it. Thanks.
Mary Ann?
Yes, Mary Ann Murray. I'd like to second what Gary just said and say that any interchanges that I've had with the police and the fire department have been absolutely spot on. And I really believe that the time has definitely come to support the police department. I mean, they have been working in very unsuitable conditions for a long time, and I've witnessed things at the town office that were absolutely inexcusable. I mean, people trying to settle family disputes inside the town office so that everyone could hear. And it's really not a suitable police department, and we do need one. But that being said, I would like to address Mr. Carey, if I may, and ask him why he would recommend this article as opposed to the second article, if he would be willing to expand on that. I'm not sure which way-- Dick Carey I'm talking about. I'm not sure which way to vote. And I'd like to know, have a little bit more information on what the difference between the two articles is going to be, other than a little bit more taxes. Thank you.
I do not claim this to be any area of expertise. I listened to Chip Alvey in his comment, "Let's do the second way and be done with it." That's basically my feeling. It seems to me this is less costly-- well, more costly in the immediate future, less costly in the long run.
I was wondering if Chip could summarize. It seems as though there's significant support for one and two, for financing versus pay now. So obviously, the grant money stays the same. The money in the police reserve fund stays the same. What are the other variables in terms of the impact of taxpayers? What are the amounts? Obviously, if you're going to finance X amount of dollars, that's going to cost us 100 and some thousand a year. What other elements are there now? It's a little elusive because we don't have the numbers, the new numbers.
Chip, do you want-- Yeah. I guess the only explanation that would maybe clear it up a bit is that you're going to have payments going forward of $196,000 a year, each year for the ongoing three-year period that we finance for. So that's going to affect the tax rate. And Jack could probably help me out on that. What is $100,000? I think it's eight cents. So that's about 16 cents on the tax--
I understand.
--if we finance. If we were to pay the bill and pull, we're talking an additional $500,000 coming out of the undesignated fund balance, but the balance of $341,000 being raised in one year in taxes. So now we're talking about 24 cents, all things being equal, if there are no adjustments in October, which there always are. So if nothing changed between now and October and the three of us decided not to do anything to mitigate the tax rate when it was our turn to work on it in October and set the tax rate, then the implication of voting for one and done, the second article present, would be about a 25 cent increase for one year. The tax for the following year-- and we did this with the library, although it's a little unclear because we were going through a reevaluation. But the tax rate didn't change. It actually went down a little bit the year after the library was done. And that was the plan all along, that we'd spend a little money one year and then the following year, the tax rate would be brought back to where it normally is.
And the amount of the undesignated fund balance that would be used for financing versus the second pay now?
So Article Five, 471? Okay, so Article Five, the one payment, and it's done. We're going to reduce the fund balance by $471,370. If we finance, we're going to reduce the fund balance by $200,000. So it's about $141,000 difference.
Okay, thanks.
And-- Are there any further questions or comments? Or are we ready?
Yes, Dan. Beverly Bruce asked me to speak. As a selectman, I was dealing with an issue now that probably would have been done at town meeting. I've had very little input over the last year or so to this facility. Alba Architects, Cope Hill Construction, and the selectmen have worked very diligently to get us to a cost and a design. I'd like to address, because I work in the building trades, the materials issue. Plywood, that was $60 a sheet in January, is now $110 a sheet. That went up $8 last week. Things are happening very quickly. I believe anyone who would give someone a hard cost that doesn't have the materials sitting in their yard to be quite foolhardy. And I think the ability to bring this project off at the projected cost isn't going to happen. When asked what would happen if we ran short of money, the construction management outfit said, "You'll have to decide what you can do without." Now, our architects have done a nice projected study, as Beverly Bruce mentioned. What she didn't mention was, in those 110 people, they predict that 78% will be 65 years old. Maybe the need for policing the over-the-hill gang isn't quite as bad as we might think. The facility is currently designed for six police officers with a roll call room that could easily accommodate four more. We have in that design a conference room. We also have a conference room at the fire station, which many groups have used. We have a fitness room, which would appear to me that buying them a gym membership each year would be cheaper than building a fitness room. Most of the-- all of the surrounding towns transport their people for processing to Carroll County. We know that that would require an officer to leave town, which would also require an officer to be on duty. This is true. So I'm in favor, definitely, of giving our police department a better facility. I think it can be done smaller with the ability to expand in the future and cheaper. As a selectman speaking, I'll do my damnedest to help this facility go forward if you decide to vote on it. And I'll do that for all the warrant articles and any other concerns you people have. Thank you.
Any other comments or criticisms? You've spoken, and we'll take-- what's his name first?
Hi, I'm-- oh, what's his name? Joe Ewing. I just wanted to point out that Article Four requires a three-fifths ballot vote. Article Five, it's not said here. Is that a simple majority, or does that require a three-fifths?
Article Five does not involve any borrowed money and as such, it's a simple majority required.
All right. Well, on that basis, I think that we should try to get on to Article Five.
Please, let's get through Article Four first. Andy?
So just to clarify something that Selectman Pike just said, there's only one meeting room. There's not two that can hold a bunch of people. And that meeting room isn't that big. It's smaller than the selectman's office at the present town hall. Yes, in one drawing, it showed it could hold 10. But if we were to hold a training or a meeting for a critical incident, and that's where part of the other grant money we're looking at is as an operation center, if you will. There's perhaps some Homeland Security money to help offset furnishing that section and other costs associated with having it as an emergency center, if you will. That's why it has to be of certain requirements. But we-- it's not huge. And if we were to host a training, for example, of any size or meeting that we can't plan-- yes, we can use the fire station if we can plan on it and it doesn't conflict with their needs or other groups' needs. But sometimes we can't plan on things around other schedules. These things happen. It's not that big. Likewise, the fitness center is not that big. It's fairly small. It basically would be probably perhaps a machine and maybe a small area. But it's not that big. The facility, with all its use, is about the size of this tent. And that includes the garage, the booking area. And yes, we do transport now to the jail, but we don't have the ability to do that at all times for all cases. And other facilities do transport to the jail, too, but not all of them, not all the time. And that is-- I've worked in other counties. We're lucky here that traditionally have allowed that, but they don't have to allow that for us to transport our booking there. And it came close to ending not too many years ago. We would have had to have processed people at the whims of other towns. So to think that we can just keep going on forever doing that, I don't know that we can count on that because legally, they don't have to allow that. And they have here. We're fortunate that they have. But there was a time they talked about eliminating that. And it's-- it not just takes people out of town. We can't do reports. We can't start working on it. And it's also, if you look at it from the other side, it's an inconvenience to the parties and you may need to pick somebody up who's maybe not having their best day. So.
Thank you. There are no further questions or comments regarding Article Four. Barry, I remind you, and you're welcome to speak, obviously, we need to set aside one hour for voting on a bond issue under any circumstances. So if we're ever going to get to the other article--
I've just got a quick couple--
Go ahead.
I'm a member of the Budget Committee, and these two warrant articles and the discussions during the Budget Committee-- if you look through your town report there, most of the votes from the Budget Committee are either unanimous in favor or 6-1, 5-1. These two were 4-3, which means we were a little confused about it in the process and having two different things. And one was actually voted down, then reconsidered. So there is a lot of concern between various different people as to the setup on this thing and the way it's set up. And my other concern is, as I look at this crowd, I see maybe 120 people here, maybe 10% of the population of town. To decide this, which is ludicrous when you think about that that small number of people can decide what's going on-- and I don't know what the answer to it is-- but my one comment is the local newspaper this week, the Granite State News, I call it, didn't have a single mention that there was a meeting here today in the town of Tuftonboro to decide these important issues. And there's something wrong there. And I don't know what the answer is, and I don't know if anybody here knows what the answer is. But we have a problem. We're town meeting is not that effective anymore. Thank you.
Yeah, oh, what's his name here again? Joe Ewing. Is it possible, instead of-- to take a straw vote?
No.
To determine whether it's necessary to take a written ballot? Because if there's not enough support to make you think that it could pass, you might as well not have the ballot.
The article calls for the issuance of bonds. We are obligated by statute to have a secret ballot vote. Which, if you're through discussing, we can move on to the question. Steve?
Only question with respect to process. Is there something which would allow us, consistent with Joe's suggestion, that we make-- that there be a motion to defer this article and go ahead and go to the next one?
No.
At this point, even though you presented it? Or are we committed to having to go ahead and do the secret ballot at this moment?
I've got a motion that's been moved and seconded. I need to move forward with that motion before we can move on to something else. So the procedure will be as follows. All of you have your voting cards, and attached to the voting cards are three yes/no ballots. The one on the back of the voting card is green. We will be voting on Article Four as amended with the green ballot, yes/no. Mark your ballot yes or no. If you prefer to set up behind a voting screen that's available, primarily if you can mark it at your place. And then we will file orderly, pass the ballot box, and then we'll pass by the ballot boxes. Beginning very shortly-- by the ballot boxes, beginning very shortly. We establish a one-hour. I guess you, before going the necessary reading of the article, my time says it's ten, ten-twelve. It is twelve minutes past ten, and twelve minutes past eleven, we will begin counting the votes. Don't move my microphone.
I make a good block, don't I?
Business, first of all, I would like to answer the question of which I received the most during the recess, and that is, is that yes, the facilities are open at the high school. Please enter by the gymnasium door and use those restrooms beyond the double doors. They are available. Thank you. Please, I have a motion for a point of war.
I move to change the order of the day to delay consideration of Article Five and Article Six until the vote on Article Four is completed, the votes are counted, and the result is announced.
I have a motion, second?
Second.
Everybody understand the motion? Bill has moved to change the order of the day and move directly to Article Seven. All those in favor, please indicate by showing me your cards. Yes, let's get going. Good. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we're going to move to Article Seven then. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two-hundred forty-eight thousand dollars for the replacement of fire rescue department SCBA self-contained breathing apparatus equipment. Two-hundred nineteen thousand, four-hundred seventy dollars to be withdrawn from a previously established SCBA capital reserve fund. Twenty-eight thousand, five-hundred thirty dollars to be raised from taxes. A majority vote is required. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen, three to, three to nothing, and by the Budget Committee, six to nothing.
I don't need a microphone if it's not on. This article, as it says, is to replace our fire department's self-contained breathing apparatus. Oh, excuse me, I moved the article.
I'll second.
This equipment is essential to protect our firefighters and their ability to protect us, and I believe Chief Thompson has a presentation if you'd like to start now, please.
Before, Chief, before you get up, I think we have a motion to be made that impacts
My name is Peter Sluski. I'm here as the treasurer of the trustee of the trust funds. I'd like to amend this article, if I could, make a motion to amend the article. And the amendment would read, and basically, this is just a change of the dollar figures of the article. This updates the amounts we're talking about. And the amendment would read, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two-hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for the replacement of fire rescue department SCBA self-contained breathing apparatus equipment. Two-hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight-hundred and ten dollars and sixty-nine cents, this is the changed figure, to be withdrawn from a previously established SCBA capital reserve fund, and twenty-three thousand, one-hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents to be raised from taxes.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, did everyone understand that Peter's motion simply changes the number of the capital reserve fund to a more accurate number, which is higher, and thus lowers the amount that needs to be raised by taxes? Is there any discussion on this? Let me read the new numbers, if you can. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two-hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for the replacement of the fire and rescue department SCBA self-contained breathing apparatus equipment. Two-hundred twenty-four thousand, eight-hundred ten and sixty-nine cents to be withdrawn from a previously established SCBA capital reserve fund. Twenty-three thousand, one-hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents to be raised from taxes. That's down from the twenty-eight thousand to be raised from taxes as originally written. Everyone understand the motion? We are voting on the amendment to change the wording of the article to reflect more accurate figures. All those in favor, please signify by raising your vote cards. All those opposed signify in a like manner. Eyes clearly have it, but the motion is now as amended. Is there any discussion in the motion? Chief, you had started to rise to speak to the motion.
This is an example of SCBA that we use every day, our job. The SEBAs are, we have, we currently have twenty-five of them, and that's what we're looking to replace. Every day in the job that we do, we may run into a situation that we, whether it's a building fire, hazardous material incident, CO incident, we are wearing these. They weigh approximately forty pounds, and the packs are good for fifteen years. In two thousand and twenty-two, our packs will reach their life expectancy. We have had failures of the packs that we're spending several thousands of dollars replacing parts in the packs. The bottles that you see in the pack itself, they have a life expectancy. All the bottles that we currently have in our packs, this year, the bottles will expire. So, the bottles that we have will cost approximately forty-eight thousand dollars to replace. So, if we replace those bottles this year, it'll cost us forty-eight thousand dollars. If we replace the whole pack, including the bottles and a spare bottle, then it's twenty-three thousand, one-hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. So, there's quite a cost savings doing it a year ahead of time with that, and that's what we're looking at. Does anyone have any questions on?
Any questions or comments regarding Article Seven? Bill, I sense that you're ready to vote on Article Seven.
Thank you.
Article Seven is amended to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two-hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for the replacement of fire and rescue department SCBA self-contained breathing apparatus equipment. Two-hundred twenty-four thousand, eight-hundred ten and sixty-nine cents to be drawn, withdrawn from a previously established SCBA capital reserve fund. Twenty-three thousand, one-hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents to be raised from taxes. All those in favor of the amendment of the article as read, please signify. Thank you. All those opposed? The eyes have it clearly, and I declare the motion passed. We will move on to Article Eight. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one-hundred and twenty thousand dollars to purchase portable radios for the fire department. A grant in the amount of one-hundred and twenty thousand dollars has been applied for, and if awarded, the amount the town will receive is ninety thousand dollars. If the grant is not awarded to the town, the entire amount of one-hundred and twenty thousand will be raised by taxation. This requires a majority vote. It's recommended by the Board of Selectmen, three to nothing, and by the Budget Committee, six to nothing.
I'd like to move the article.
Chief has moved the article. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, this, I'm going to have Chief Thompson maybe flesh out exactly what it is we're buying, but as to the wording of the article, we have applied for a grant to fund this radio purchase, which would bring in ninety thousand of the one-hundred and twenty thousand dollars needed. We did, during discussions of the creation of the warrant, want to write this to say that if we didn't get the grant, we weren't going to spend the money. That option wasn't accepted by DRA. So, if we're going to ask for a one-hundred and twenty thousand dollar obligation, we can't make it subject to the reception of the grant. So, that's why the article reads that if we don't get the grant, then we're obligated to spend the one-hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of money raised from taxes. That said, if we don't get the grant, the discussion of whether or not we do this particular radio program is going to continue. I'd like to turn it over to Chief Thompson, if I could.
Some portable radios that we use every day. Each firefighter, which we have twenty-eight currently in the department, is issued a radio. Currently, we don't have enough for everyone, as far as radio-wise, between the radios that have broke or we have just more people. Through a grant in two thousand and seven, we received portable radios for the current amount of people that we had at that point in time. These, the particular radios now are no longer supported. We currently, when we replaced our mobile radios in our fire apparatus, as you might see around town, we were going to go for portable radios, and we were going to go for mobile radios. We found out that the portable radios were going to be, they were going to be able to fix them and have parts for them for a couple more years, so we put off the portable side of things. And then unfortunately, the portable side of things is more expensive than the mobile side of things. So, that's where the one-hundred and twenty thousand dollars comes in. We would be purchasing thirty-five radios. That would outfit the current membership, and it would put a portable radio in each one of the apparatus which, that we have currently for there. We are noticing, obviously, that some of the portables are failing, and when we send them in, they can't repair them because they don't have the parts to do so. So, that's, that's what we're looking at with replacing that. If we get the grant, as they said, the ninety thousand dollars will come back. However, we still have to show that we have the four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do the radio private. Is there any questions for that?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments regarding Article Eight? Ready to vote? I'll read the article. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one-hundred and twenty thousand dollars to purchase portable radios for the fire department. A grant in the amount of one-hundred and twenty thousand dollars has been applied for, and if awarded, the town will receive ninety thousand dollars. If the grant is not awarded to the town, the entire amount of one-hundred and twenty thousand dollars will be raised by taxation. All those in favor of Article Eight as written, please signify by raising your voting cards. All those opposed signify in a like manner. Thank you. The eyes have it, and I declare Article Eight is passed. Article Nine. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one-hundred twenty-four thousand, six-hundred twenty-five dollars to pay a third installment toward the fire truck acquired in two thousand and eighteen, as approved by voters pursuant to Article Six of the two thousand and eighteen town meeting. The principal amount is one-hundred and fifteen thousand, nine-hundred and fifty-one dollars, and the interest is eight thousand, six-hundred and seventy-four dollars. This five-year lease agreement contains an escape clause. Majority vote is required. It's recommended by the Board of Selectmen, three to nothing, and by the Budget Committee, six to nothing. Do I hear a motion?
I move the article.
Second? Thank you.
So, this is a piece of fire apparatus that we took delivery of in, I believe, two thousand and nineteen. Is that correct, Chief?
Two thousand and nineteen.
Yep. And this is the third payment on that lease, and in, the third in a series of four payments, and I really don't have anything beyond that to say, other than it's part of an ongoing series we agreed to back in two thousand and eighteen.
Any further comments or questions regarding Article Ten? I'm sorry, Article Nine. Is there, yes, Joe?
Joe Ewing. Chief, does, at the end of this lease, do we have the option of acquiring this truck, or will it be paid for, or does it have to be turned back in?
No, it's paid for. It's the truck that's sitting.
So, this is a lease purchase arrangement, so that the end of the lease, it's our truck?
Yep.
Okay.
Are there any further questions or comments regarding Article Eight? Barry? Thank you very much. You guys are paying attention. That was just a test. All those in favor of Article Nine as read? Thank you. All those opposed? The eyes have it, and I declare Article Nine is passed. Article Ten. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three-hundred seventy thousand dollars for the preparation and paving of town roads. Majority vote is required. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen, three to nothing, and the Budget Committee, five to one. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to move the article.
The article has been moved, seconded.
This is the annual paving article. It's up from last year a bit. Last year, you approved two-hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Grasken for three-hundred and seventy. Editorializing. The reason for that is, is we're including in this budget the preparation for paving as well as the paving itself, and we're trying to bring the amount of paved road or newly paved road up to be more compliant with the Lakes Region Planning Commission survey that was done on our paving needs. We're following the culvert plans that they proposed for us, and we're hoping that this will bring our paving up to that level of, on the schedule that we've prepared for the paving. It's going to finish Dame Road and, isn't it? Yeah, it is. Finish Dame Road, and we'll have just the top coat of Northline Road left to do. It's also included in this number and in the highway budget as preparation for paving at other areas around the town, one being Shirley Way.
Any other comments or questions regarding Article Ten?
Barry, again, does anybody have any idea what the price of asphalt has done and how that might have implications on the number that you propose and now on what you propose to do with that? I gotta believe it must be sky-high like everything else, but is that something that's been looked at? Thank you.
Yeah, we've just, we haven't gotten our final number from Carroll Paving, who does our paving. There has been a price increase that's reflected in this, but as you said, it's a moving target all the way along. The paving schedule is for June, for the month of June, so... The paving schedule is for June, for the month of June, so at least we're not pushing it out into the fall and looking at more prices increases than.
Any other questions or comments regarding Article 10? If you're ready to vote, I will read the article to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $370,000 for the preparation and paving of town roads. All those in favor of the article as read, please raise your voting cards. Those opposed, signify in a like manner. The eyes have it, and I declare Article 10 is passed. I love the brisk cold weather and the fall talk. Article 11. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the design and permitting of the Lake Road project. Majority vote is required. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen three to nothing and by the Lake, and, I'm sorry, and by the Budget Committee, five to one. Ready to move the article?
I move the article.
Second. Thank you. Bill?
So those of you familiar with the launch ramp at Lake Road in Melvin Village will remember that we have a bulkhead that runs along the side of the channel all the way out to the little beach area. That bulkhead is deteriorated and continuing to deteriorate. This project is to complete the design work for repair, slant replacement of that bulkhead running alongside the channel going out to the point.
Comments or questions regarding Article 11? Yes, Jill?
Jill Cromwell?
Laura Datsch.
Okay.
Get right up.
Once the design and permitting is done, how far out will we have as a timeframe from the permitting to actually fund the project and do it?
So a DES permit is good for five years once it's issued, so it gives us some flexibility in terms of when we schedule the project for completion.
Thank you. I ask because on the capital improvement plan, we moved it out to 2024, so if we would still be in that timeframe, that would be great.
Any other questions or comments regarding Article 11? If you're ready to vote, I will read the article. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the design and permitting of the Lake Road project. All those in favor of Article 11 as read, please signify by raising your voting cards. Those opposed in a like manner. The eyes have it, and I declare Article 11 is passed. Article 12. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $17,000 from the Millfoil Joint Board to be deposited to the previously established Millfoil Expandable Trust Fund. No funds to be raised from taxes. Majority vote is required. It's recommended by the Board of Selectmen three to nothing and the Budget Committee six to nothing.
I move the article.
Article is moved. Seconded. Seconded.
So the Millfoil Joint Board of Wolfboro and Tuftonboro operated, owned and operated diver-assisted suction harvesting equipment for about 10 years. The Joint Board has recently divested itself of the harvesting assets and no longer needs all of the reserve funds that they built up over the years and have voted to distribute reserve funds to the two communities for use in their millfoil harvesting. So this money is coming from the reserves of the Millfoil Joint Board and will involve no taxpayer expense to the town of Tuftonboro.
Any other comments or questions regarding Article 12? If you're ready to vote, I will reread the article to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $17,000 from the Millfoil Joint Board to be deposited to the previously established Millfoil Expandable Trust Fund. No funds to be raised by taxes. All those in favor of Article 12, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed in a like manner, thank you very much. The eyes have it, and Article 12, I declare passed. Article 13. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to purchase land to add to the Great Meadow Project, with $20,000 to come from a private donation and $20,000 to come from the Tuftonboro Conservation Fund. The remaining amount of $60,000 to be raised from taxation. Majority vote is required. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen three to nothing and by the Budget Committee five to one.
Yes, the town has, oh, excuse me, I have to move the article, sorry, new man.
Second. Is there a second? Yes.
The town has the opportunity to purchase a piece of property up on Sodom Road, which abuts the Great Meadow and actually is quite nicely fits the requirements to protect the Great Meadow. Selectmen Mackeson and I, along with Chairman Steve Wingate, have walked the property and we feel that this would be a good acquisition. Chairman Wingate from the Conservation, excuse me, Conservation Commission has a presentation, I believe, a little more detail.
You wanna go or do you wanna let Steve? Steve, why don't you go ahead with your presentation?
Over 20 years ago, the then Conservation Commission did an analysis.
Get right close to that mic, Steve.
The Conservation Commission over 20 years ago did an analysis of undeveloped areas in Tuftonboro and prioritized where they should put their efforts. The Osiphe Range, which has been conserved nicely by Lakes Region Conservation Trust and the Great Meadow were the two big targets at that time. Because of what Casmona Claus and Lakes Region Conservation Trust has done up in the Osiphe Range, we focused all our efforts in the Great Meadow, which is a, has a very rich history. The pioneers of Tuftonboro and that area managed to share the Great Meadow to produce a sustainable supply of fodder for their cattle. And then when agriculture kind of died out in town, it reverted back to its natural condition, which has about 23 recognizable wildlife habitats. It's a very diverse area over a very pure and large aquifer, one of the best in the lake regions. The Conservation Commission with financial support from the Tuftonboro Association is currently building a trail so that citizens can go down to the Great Meadow and view what it's all about. It's a wonderful place of wildlife activity. It serves as a great sponge-like in the Melvin River watershed to absorb storm water and then distribute it later in the seasons. It's also a great fishery. The town currently controls about 50% of the area and we're picking up more pieces all the time. This particular parcel lies between the Melvin River and Sodom Road. It's a very picturesque area along Sodom Road and it's also adjacent to where the trail head is. If we have the opportunity, then we would add a loop for the trail that would go down the Melvin River on this property. There's currently a house on the property, which we would survey out with a house lot and that would remain on the tax rolls. So we hope you'll support our effort to conserve this wonderful place in Tuftonboro. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Yes?
Jackie Rollins. This property is already owned by the town. I don't understand why we wanna purchase it when it's in the town, owned by the town owns it. Why, and it's 25 acres, why can't the Conservation Commission, with their $20,000 that they're donating, get it subdivided, do a boundary line adjustment, give 23 acres, add it to the Great Meadows, take the two acres with the house and sell it, and we'd probably make $100,000? So I don't get where the article says to purchase property. We already own the property. I recommend a no vote on this can of worms. Thank you.
So I would like to address.
Any information?
I would like to address that issue. As I'm sure the tax collector knows, we have a, we took the property on a tax deed a couple of years ago because the owner has not been paying their taxes. The law in the state of New Hampshire is that our interest in the property extends no further than the taxes, penalties, and fees associated with the ownership. And any excess proceeds from sale of the property go back to the former owner. So while it's true that we could take that property and incorporate it as it is, we still, that doesn't absolve the town of the liability for the residual value in the property beyond what the former owner owns, owes. And that's what the purchase of this property would represent.
Any further comments?
Yes, I'd like a little clarification on exactly what we're talking about here. On the one hand, Bill, you're saying we can't sell it because whatever excess amount would then go to the former owner. But Jackie's saying we already own it in the first place, even if we didn't, if we took a piece of it and gave it to the conservation guys, why do we have to spend any money to do any of this?
Because the value of the property beyond what the former owner owes in taxes belongs to the former owner.
We don't sell it, why, there's no...
So if we take that property and it's no longer available to the owner to redeem, we have to compensate them for it beyond what they owe in taxes, penalties, interest, and fees.
Is there not a period of time involved after which they...
So in, in the law, there used to be a limit to the liability. That was changed by a court decision within the last few years so that that, that ownership interest never expires.
Yeah, I didn't care. To whom does the $100,000 payment go? To the previous owner?
Yeah, the bulk of the money actually would come back to the town in the form of tax payment made by the previous owner. So if that previous owner owed $60,000 in back taxes, $60,000 of $100,000 would get paid back into the treasurer's account and the balance of that would go to the property owner, who would then take their property back and hopefully pay the taxes going forward.
Barry Ennis. In the last year or two, we had a townwide auction of town-owned properties. How did the finances on that work? Where did the money from those go? Because I know that there was more money there than what was owed in taxes, and how does that apply to this particular instance?
So it's the same sort of circumstance. We auctioned the properties. Any excess proceeds from those auctions beyond what was owed by the former owner goes back to the former owner. The town receives back taxes, interests, the 10% penalty, and any fees and costs associated with it. Anything beyond that goes back to the former owner.
Yes. Want to speak? Yeah. That property is right in back of my own property and I don't know anything about this. It doesn't affect my property at all?
Are you Miss Joanie?
No. I'm Laurie Fornier.
Oh, very good.
45 Sodom.
I can't for the life of me see how it would affect your property.
Okay. Just wanted to know.
And I was born and raised on Sodom. I'm very familiar with the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Paul. Paul McCourt of Melvin Village. This whole thing seems pretty fuzzy right now and it seems late in the game to have an expectation that based on the information Jackie provided and what you're providing the board and the Conservation Commission, that we should be able to absorb it and vote yes on this thing. So I, I'd look to the board to get us, make it more clear now, if you can, or a vote no. Thank you.
I have one question. If we vote this down, I'm assuming the end result of this article is to get a piece of land that we can add to the already existing Great Meadows property so it remains a natural habitat, et cetera, et cetera. If we vote this down and don't spend this money, what happens to that piece of land? What is the positives and the negatives? The positive, I'm assuming, is it will just stay there and be the same. And the negatives are the previous owner could buy it back by paying his taxes and penalties and we'd lose access to it? Or, you know, could you give us a, what would happen if you do one and not the other scenario?
So I'll take a, get my crystal ball out here and try and make it a little bit clearer. If we don't acquire this property at this time, will there ever be a time in the future when we might be able to? That's certainly possible. As we've already discussed, it's now held by the town on a tax deed. One of two things is gonna happen going forward with respect to the property. Either the former owner will find a way to come forward with enough money to redeem it for the back taxes, penalties, and interest, or they won't and will put it up for auction. At the time that we put it up for auction, depending upon who purchases it, I think would determine whether there would be a further opportunity in the future to purchase this particular parcel as an extension of the Great Meadow. So it, if we don't do it now, I guess I would say that the opportunity is not forever extinguished, but the certainty of being able to work an arrangement where we can purchase it is, becomes much, much less known.
Steve Brinzer, Melvin Village. So the town owns the property because it took it by tax deed, and so the town is the seller. That's correct at this point? Even though Jackie's saying, and that's consistent with what you said. And is it the whole parcel that we're talking about that the town took or just a piece of it? The whole piece?
The whole piece.
No, this house.
No.
No, this house. We own the whole parcel, which includes the residence, and the proposal here is to subdivide the property so that a little over two acres would remain with the residence and the balance of the parcel, somewhere around 20 acres, I think it is, would be appended to the Great Meadow.
And if that were done, do we have something that tells us what the fair market value of the two pieces is?
So, the transaction price associated with this parcel for the Great Meadows is based upon an appraisal that was done about two months ago.
Okay, so we do have it.
Yes.
And that's where you're getting the total amount, which is what Steve's proposing?
That's correct. That includes a transaction price for purchase of it, which would involve most of that money coming back to the town to pay off the taxes and penalties, as well as the cost to do the subdivision.
Okay. Thanks.
Steve, go ahead, Steve.
If I could try to simplify this a little bit, we've been talking with the selectmen for quite a while on this unusual situation and how to deal with it. So, our objective is to remain in control of the property. That is, the other alternative for the selectmen is to auction it off and then see what the Conservation Commission could work out with a future owner. We lose control when that happens. So, this way, where we essentially pay the back taxes and then separate what was formerly in current use and not paying a lot of taxes from the residence, which has mainly all the tax value, then we can keep that property as an asset for the Great Meadow and for keeping their rural character of Tuftonboro along Sodom Road, and then put the house, the residence, back in the tax rules, paying taxes. And I think the former owner intends to sell it, and, you know, the way things are going right now, that would be the smart thing to do. And then it would be back paying the same taxes it used to. So, I'm really hoping you'll vote for this. This is good for the Great Meadow project. This is good for the town and our future. Thank you.
Joe.
Just to clarify one thing, and that is that if the town put this up for auction, the town cannot bid on it, right? Cannot acquire it at auction. It has to be sold to some other party besides the town?
Well, the only way that, the only way that we could bid on it would be if you, the voters at town meeting, gave us a warrant article empowering us to do that. So, it isn't, and just to clarify a couple of things, we went through, we've gotten over this for quite a long time with Steve. My preferred method would have been that the original owner work a deal with our Conservation Commission to raise the money through borrowing, pay the taxes, and then subdivide the property from her prop, or their property. The second option would be to find a buyer who would be willing to buy the property, subject to a conservation easement. Neither of those processes worked. We, Steve put us a good college try to it, so we're left with what we're looking at right here. And we do, by statute and by law, have to give the former property owner fair market value or whatever the market establishes as fair market value. So, it isn't as if we can set our own price on the piece we want to keep.
Jackie?
Jackie, again. The town already owns the property. The town does not have to auction it off. The town can do a boundary line adjustment with the property they own, add it to the Great Meadow, and then take the remaining two acres with the house, and then auction that off.
I think I'd have our attorney speak to it because I think you just opened up another can of worms because the former owner of the property has rights. We only own what would essentially be a mortgage on the property of the amount of taxes. But maybe our attorney could speak.
I'd like to suggest, you rising to speak? Please do. This is Barbara Lowman, our town council, and I think she's going to bring some clarity.
One of the problems here is that the law for tax deeds has changed. Back in the bad old days, if the town took a piece of property by tax deed, if the owner didn't redeem it within a short period of time, it was worked out to a couple of years, then the town owned it free and clear. Well, the Supreme Court in New Hampshire didn't like that, and so the Supreme Court issued, there have been a couple of decisions on this, but the final result is that if you're going to take property by tax deed, the owner is entitled to whatever the property, whatever the value is, less whatever the owner owns in taxes. So, my understanding is that the tax deed is to the entire property. Therefore, you can't fix this just by doing a boundary line adjustment. That would require the agreement of the owner. The sensible way, it seems to me, from the legal perspective, not, you know, obviously the decision is up to the voters, but from the legal perspective, the cleanest way to deal with this is what the selectmen are suggesting at this point, which is that the town buy the property. The taxes will be taken out of what the town is going to be paying. The owner will end up with the house and a little bit of land around it, and the town has the additional land that goes into the Meadow project or whatever you want to call it because there's just no other way to do it. The town can't just take the property. The town can't force the owner to agree to a boundary line adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Go ahead, Anne, because you've spoken once, and then we'll be back to you.
Okay. Clarification in terms of, I mean, do we actually have some kind of agreement with the owner? And do we know what the value of the house is? And is he, she in the wings to buy it back? Or is there some kind of understanding with this owner, former owner?
So, there is an understanding relative to the purchase of this land, the transaction of this land to add it to the Great Meadow. Once the proceeds are available to pay the taxes, then the owner owns the house parcel and the home that's on it again because the obligation will be repaid, which is the taxes, interest, and penalties.
And this is formalized?
It is.
Bob? Bob McQuarrie, Melvin Village. Bill, just to that last point, how is it formalized? Has the 20 acres or whatever it is, has that been taken out of the parcel?
No, it's, the proposal has been approved. So, it has not been subdivided at this point.
Well, it will have to be at some point.
It will be subdivided. It will have to be subdivided so that the part that goes to the Great Meadow becomes a town parcel and the other part remains separate.
So, personally, I think the intent is good. I don't think the detail's here to ask us to make an informed decision. It seems very convoluted. Jackie's idea seems like a good one. The attorney's saying that's not the way to go, so I don't think you folks have enough information to...
I would only reiterate, as Chip mentioned, we've worked through a number of scenarios to get to where we're at, including having counsel involved every step of the way, counsel for the former owner as well as town council in the process. I'm sorry if you feel that it's convoluted. My guess is it's because of misunderstanding of what the town's interest in the parcel is. I think counsel helped to clarify that, that we don't, we control the parcel until it's redeemed, but our only interest, financial interest in it, is what's owed to the town. Any residual interest goes back to the former owner.
Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt here just long enough to say that the one-hour voting period on Article Four has been completed, and I'm going to ask our two ballot clerks if they would proceed counting the ballots. We will continue and dispose of this article, which is Article 13, first, and then we will have the results on Article Four. So, continue. Who was Anne?
Just some further clarification in trying to find the bottom line in all of this. Did that appraisal appraise the entire property with 25 acres? And do we know the value of the house and two acres? So, bottom line, what are we actually paying?
So, the appraisal appraised the parcel that we're looking to add to the Great Meadow, correct?
Yes.
Right. And the value of the house is immaterial to this transaction because it's not part of the transaction?
Okay. $87,000 for 25 acres. Okay, so that's really what we're paying?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Bill. I just have one question. Did this person that forfeited her house for not paying taxes come to you, or did you go to her with this deal? It sounds like a deal to me because if we go through with this, you don't really suffer anything for not paying your taxes. But it sounds like to me, you don't pay your taxes, but you are going to get paid back so you can repurchase your property. That's a pretty good deal as far as I'm concerned.
Except for acreage.
Well, I don't care about the acreage.
The person that's receiving all this money obviously had a problem by not paying her taxes, and does she want to get back in the same situation that she had before? It just doesn't make sense.
I would only offer that the biggest recipient on this transaction is the town of Tuftonboro because the back taxes and penalties will be satisfied and not be held as outstanding.
Beverly?
Didn't answer the question, Jill. Did she come to you or did you go to her?
No. No, the town is interested in this, in adding this parcel to the Great Meadow, so we approached her.
Beverly, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. So, Bill, I beg your pardon, but I think it is very convoluted, and I think that Jackie makes a good point. Have we negotiated with the owner to see if they would agree to a boundary adjustment, and then she can do whatever she wants with the property? But it seems unclear to me who we negotiate with. Do we negotiate with the town? Do we negotiate with the owner? It's very, very confusing.
Yeah, just to answer Beverly's question, we're not in the negotiating business. We don't negotiate with anybody. We have a value set by a licensed appraiser so we know what the value of the property that we want to add to the rolls of the town-owned Great Meadow, and that's all we do. As far as subdividing the property and getting an agreement from the former owner, we have an agreement that she wants this process to go forward. But we could just as easily say to Steve, nah, we're just going to put the whole piece up for auction. If we did that, and let's say we brought in $200,000, she's, we would still only keep the amount of taxes owed. We wouldn't make any additional capital for the town. Maybe we'd have a better taxpayer in place, but that's the only benefit for the town.
So, the town's paying the taxes basically?
No, no, but we're buying the property and the property's paying the taxes. If we don't buy the property, then somebody else buys the property. That sale proceeds pays the tax. The only benefit to the town is getting the taxes paid.
All right, Jill?
Jill Fromwell. It seems to me, I know it's a very difficult process to understand, and therefore I do trust that our elected officials and our attorney have worked on this to come up with a good solution to purchase 25 acres or approximately for $100,000. Seems like a really good deal in today's market, and adding it to our conservation land to protect an aquifer, to keep open space, to add to our trail system, to keep us all healthy, I think is a great idea, and I think we should support this. I call for a vote.
Thank you, Jill. Is there anything the town council wants to add, given what you've heard? Okay. We've heard the arguments. Are we ready to vote?
Move the question. Folks, we're called to move the question.
If I understand, what taxes are owed to the town? We haven't heard that number, okay? $50,000, $60,000? What's owed on this piece of property?
Well, it changes every day.
I understand that. It goes up, it doesn't go down, okay?
Right, and I don't have that...
Okay. Is it $10,000 or $50,000? Which realm are we in?
It's...
45, okay? Okay. Well, what's going to happen, if I understand this, and it seems like we're going around in circles, if you appropriate this money and if it goes forth, the town owns a whole piece of property, that's it, okay? They put money back in their pocket. Is that correct? From the taxes. Well, the town still owns this 25 acres because this person has gotten back, say, $55,000 out of the $100,000. $45,000 gone into the town for the taxes, and the town still owns this 25 acres at this stage of the game. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, basically, what you're doing is resolving an issue, you're putting money in the town's pocket, and we're having 20 some odd acres go onto Great Meadows here. I don't, that's, it really hasn't cost you much of anything. You've gotten 20 acres for $55,000 then, basically. So, that's, it's cost you $2,500 an acre. This is a hell of a deal when you come right down. That is what I've got in my mind here. Is that somewhat simple?
All right. I would entertain a motion to call the question. Thank you very much. All those in favor of calling the question, please raise your voting cards. Those opposed? I think we clearly have the two-thirds required to call the question. I will read the article as written to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to purchase land to add to the Great Meadow project, with $20,000 to come from a prize hunt donation and $20,000 to come from the Tuftonboro Conservation Hub, the remaining amount of $60,000 to be raised from taxation. All those in favor of the Article 13 as read, please signify by raising your voting. All those opposed, please indicate in a like manner. The ayes clearly have it, majority was required, and I declare that Article 13 is passed. Now, I would ask...
Not yet. Not yet.
All right. We can either take a brief recess while they finish counting, or we can move on to Article 14. What is your question? Article 14. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $55,000 for the purpose of completing improvements to the section of Willand Road that was approved for conversion from a Class 6 to a Class 5 status by Article 24 of the March 10, 2020 town meeting, the sum to be reimbursed by the property owners abutting or served by such road through a Betterment Assessment pursuant to RSA 231:28 through RSA 231:31. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to move the article.
Motion. Second, Steve Rinzler.
Go ahead, Chip. Okay, this is continuation of what we did last year.
Okay, this is continuation of what we did last year. March 11th, 2020, the town voted to change the road classification for a portion of Willand Road pursuant to a petition by citizens of the town and people who lived on Willand Road. Following that, in August of 2020, we had a public hearing wherein we were accepting gifts towards, for the town, towards the rehabilitation of Willand Road from a Class Six to a Class Five. The total cost that we're looking, well, the cost that we're proposing to assess against the property owners is $55,000. Although we haven't voted, we had active discussions about the length of time that that would be spread over, and I think we've come to an agreement that it'll be somewhere around 10 years. I think we've also decided that it would be a per-sterpy's agreement. In other words, each property owner would share equally in the assessment. We could, I suppose, do it by road frontage footage, but we haven't gotten through that discussion, or actually haven't even entered into that discussion. So far, it has been a per-resident assessment that we're looking at. So, we need to allocate the $55,000 this year, and it'll get paid back over time, and so ultimately the taxpayers aren't adversely impacted, not unlike what happened at Zadi Dha Farms where the same process was applied.
I'll answer questions regarding this order. Yes?
Hi, Laurel Podson. I was wondering if, before going into this and voting on this, if there's a way to say, what the $55,000, what changes would be made with that money? And... Go ahead.
So, we've had conversations with the road agent about work that needs to be done. It includes some work at the intersection between the Mountain Road and Willand Road. There's sightline deficiency there, coming in and out. There also are some areas along the road that during winter maintenance this year became evident and need, need some additional attention in terms of the ditch lines and the grade. I apologize, I don't have any more specifics in front of me, but that's, those are the two basic areas that were, that need additional work.
Thank you for clarifying. I'm not here to argue because it's already been voted on, but I did just want to bring to the attention of voters that not everyone owning abutting property to Willand Road actually uses this road. I own property on one side of Willand Road that abuts about three-quarters of the section of the road that is being maintained by the town now, and I don't have a home or a driveway on this road. I do not use this road for transportation, and I'm not the only one in this situation. I also have no intention of ever selling my property, therefore I have no interest in what the improvements would do to the value of my property. So, before voting, I just hope you take this into consideration of those of us that will be paying for these changes. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or criticisms regarding the questions, I should say?
It's also accurate that the people on the road have already spent a range of $25,000 to make other improvements prior to this issue, the $55,000 improvements. And also, it seems to me, this was the town road, so basically, these are deferred maintenance. These are costs that accrued over time because the town didn't take care of their road, going back how many of years it is. I think it's outstanding that the people on the road are willing to pay for bringing this up to some standard, but I think we should consider those facts in addition to... All we're doing right now in voting is we're saying, okay, they can, we'll spend the money and they'll reap versus. Is that correct?
So, this road was, is a town road. About 100 years ago, maintenance was stopped on it, and it was turned into a Class Six road. I think it was 1919 is when the town stopped doing maintenance on it. That was a formal process to not spend any more money on it. That's what a Class Six road is, okay? The town is not authorized to spend money on the road. So, we had a petition article brought to Town Meeting last year requesting that the road be reclassified as a Class Five, which is town-maintained road, and as part of that article, it was agreed that the abutters would be subject to betterment assessment to pay for the upgrades necessary to bring it up to a current town standard. So, all of that was approved in our meeting last year. This article is to appropriate to specific dollars in connection with that that will then be paid back by those people who've already agreed that they would do it over a period of time. So, yes, it's a town road, but because for 100 years we didn't do maintenance on it, of course it was allowed to deteriorate and to change, and as part of their interest in having the town take over maintenance so they don't have to clear the snow and fix the washhouse and all that sort of thing, they agreed that they would be subject to a betterment assessment.
So, it seems like a no-brainer to me. They're willing to pay for the improvements, and that's basically what we're, we're voting on this, allow them to do it.
So, we're voting on an appropriation of money from the town that becomes a loan, if you will, to those residents across the side, that is both sides, that will be paid back over a period of time.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions regarding Article Fourteen? If no more questions or comments, I will read the article, and we will vote, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $55,000 for the purpose of completing improvements to the section of Willand Road that was approved for conversion from a Class Six to a Class Five status by Article Twenty-four of the March 10th, 2020 Town Meeting. The sum to be reimbursed by the property owners abutting or served by such road through a betterment assessment pursuant to RSA 231:28 through RSA 231:31. All those who are in favor of Article Fourteen as read, please signify by raising your All those opposed, please signify in a like manner. The ayes have it clearly, and I declare Article Fourteen to be passed. That's 40% yes. We require 60% for passage. Article Four is declared failed. 165 votes cast, by the way, if anybody's doing the math. We now move to Article Five. Article Five is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,600,000 to build and equip a new police facility, further to authorize the withdrawal of $664,258 from a previously established police facility capital reserve fund, $250,000 to come from an awarded USDA grant, and $400,000 to come from the undesignated fund balance, $285,742 to be raised from taxes. This article is contingent on Article Four not passing. Would you do... Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move this article.
Chip has moved the article for a second. Steve is second. Chip?
I need to, I'd like to offer an amendment to the article to bring the money numbers up to date. The amendment, do you want to read the amendment? Okay.
Well, this is the one that you...
Okay. All right, fine. Okay, we can read it together. Crosby and Stilf. Article Five amendment would read, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,772,000 to build and equip a new police facility, further to authorize the withdrawal of $673,825 from a previously established police facility capital reserve fund, $341,063 to come from an awarded USDA grant..." It's written twice. Four hundred... Where am I? Okay, $271,370 coming from the undesignated fund balance, $285,742 to be raised by taxes. This article is contingent on Article Four not passing. If Article Four passes, this article is null and void.
What's the grant?
$341,063.
How did that go up? Go up from the 250?
Well, because the grant wasn't awarded one week.
Right.
The grant award came last week and was for more than they had projected.
Okay. If you heard the by-play, I noted that the grant, the Department of Agriculture's grant was higher in the amendment that Chip just read than it was in the original article. I questioned that. It's because the grant came through only recently, within the past week, and the grant was for more than they anticipated a few months ago when this article was written. So, we have an amendment changing the wording of Article Five, which changes the numbers, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,772,000 to build and equip a new police facility, further to authorize the withdrawal of $673,825 from a previously established police facility capital reserve fund, $341,063 to come from an awarded U.S. Department of Agriculture grant, and $471,370 to come from the undesignated fund balance, $285,742 to be raised from taxes. That's the amendment for us right now that will change the numbers of the original article.
I'll second that if it hadn't been seconded.
Are we ready to vote on the amendment? Good. All opposed in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed in a like manner. The amendment, the article as amended is now current. Are there any comments or questions regarding Article Five as amended?
Yeah, Bob Murray, you're reading the fund balance. Can you elaborate on our fund balance, please? How much is in there? How much are we recommending to keep in there, and how this affects our fund balance?
The fund balance number that we have from the end of 2019, December 31st, 2019, which is an audited amount is one mil, just under $1,100,000. We haven't gotten the audited number for 2020. We should have that at some point this spring. But my reading of the numbers as we finished up 2020 is that we should have between $150 and $200,000 to add to that undecided fund. But if we know, we know the figure of $1,100,000 from 2019. If we reduce it by $475,000, we'll cut about $525,000 left in the ballot, in that fund. DRA recommends 10% of your operating budget. Our operating budget's $4 million or thereabouts, so $400,000 would be the recommendation at 10%. But remember, it's your savings account. It's not DRA's savings account. They just want us to have something in the bank so that if some tragedy happens, we don't have to have a special town meeting to raise funds. We should have a better idea of the actual number in October. We'll definitely have a better idea in October when we set the tax rate, what's left in that undesignated fund balance.
Comments and criticism, comments and questions, comments and questions on Article Five, please.
I got to criticize you guys. I'm just saying that amended article there, the numbers on everything changed, they all went up. I kind of predict the future. I think those numbers are going to keep going up because of the current situation that the whole world is in and where in, and I'll say one more time, I don't believe 2021 is the year to do this because of all those different considerations, and I think we should vote it down. People say you're kicking it down the road, but it might be a good time to kick it down the road for just a while for the sake of the townspeople.
More comments and questions? Yes, go ahead.
Chuck Elliott, 14 Shirley Way. You know, it is a disappointment in the number of turnout, but looking out over the 165, most of us are gray-haired. And you know what? This is important to us. We're on pensions, we're retired, we're not getting cost of living increases each year, and taxes keep going up. So, I, be strong, seniors, and let's vote it down again. Thank you.
Are there any other comments regarding Article Five? Yes, go ahead.
Eric Rosin, I'm just curious...
Get right up to them, Mike.
I'm curious as to what price guarantees are built into the contract, given what Kai has mentioned, I've been hearing. Can they pull it off? I mean, is it a guarantee? It can't be an absolute price, or is it? I guess it's a big question.
Yeah, our intention is to get a guaranteed maximum price. I mean, maybe if they can't do it, if the gloom and doom of Mr. Anis is correct, then perhaps we won't have a police station built across the street. But our intention is to get a guaranteed price and to hold their feet to the fire and get it done.
Chris?
Chris Calder, proud husband of the town clerk. And much simpler than she is. So, what I did was I scratched some numbers on the back of our voting tab here, and I'll let Jack audit them when he has a chance. But if I understand correctly from back, from Chip, this one-time payment of 270, whatever the thousand is, in 1.7, kind of, that's a scary number. That's a lot of money. When you talk about 270,000 or whatever it is, that's kind of scary. But when you break it down into simple terms, and my numbers are a little off because I didn't get to Jackie until too late to ask her what the... didn't get to Jackie until too late to ask her what to do, but she don't. So if it's 24 cents per thousand, um, Jackie said the, roughly the median price for a home in Tufton Borough valuation is 300,000. But I broke it down into four, just, and just let me say this. So if your home is valued at 250,000, one-time payment would be $60, 16 cents a day, $1.25 a week, or $4.80 a month. If your house is valued at 350,000, that's a one-time payment of $84, 23 cents a day, $1.61 a week, or $644 a month. My home would be $102, uh, one-time payment, 28 cents a day, $1.95 a week, $783 a month. Um, now I'm getting to the area where probably us gray hairs and the people that are only here in the summer aren't gonna be here, but if your home's valued at 750,000, that's a one-time payment of $180, 50 cents a day, $3 a week, $15 a month. Now by any chance your house is worth, is valued at $1 million, that's $240 a one-time payment, 66 cents a day, $4.63 a month, a week, or $18.40 a month. That's less than three meals at the Pine Cone a year. And I will tell you that I am willing to take $102 out of my children's inheritance to support this. Thank you.
Are there any more, uh, comments and questions regarding Article Five? Yes, Steve?
Chip, I just wanted to keep clarification. You said that it was your intent that this would be a guaranteed, not to exceed price of $1,772, whatever it was. Are we voting on get that to be a guaranteed maximum price, or are we just saying that's what is, we're gonna agree to now and when it comes in? If Barry is correct, when you basically look at the commodities market, lumber prices have gone sky high, so let's just say for grins that Barry's correct, what happens when actual contracts are led and the number's 2 million? Or whatever number you want, something more than 100 million. What do you guys?
What, the, the way town meetings work is that you, the voters, are the legislative body, and you're going to decide how much money you're gonna allow us to spend. So we've asked you for $1,772, and that's what this is, what you're voting on here. If you vote for this warrant article, those are the parameters and limitations of our activity. If we can't accomplish this for that amount of money, we have no other option than to not do it and come back here next March or whenever next year's town meeting is and try again. So it's in our best interest as elected officials to get the job done. But, I mean, we're not all-powerful. We can't determine everything. But you're, you are in your vote limiting us to this number. That's, you've set a maximum price on this deal, $1,772, and a maximum amount to be raised by taxes of $285,000. So you've told us those are the parameters within which you'll allow this deal to go forward, and we have to operate within those parameters.
Skip Hurt, Tufton Borough. Do we lose this grant if we don't?
Get close to the mic, Skip, when people want to.
Do we lose the grant if we don't pass this, this year?
So, the grant, the grant is approved, and it's, and the money is available to us for five years from when it was signed, and I believe it was signed by USDA earlier this week. So, the grant doesn't go away, but I will reiterate what I said earlier, the grant that we have now is for the current design, so.
It has to be this design, yes?
Well, there, there's an opportunity, if we change the design, to go back and request it again. But this, this, this grant and this dollar amount is based upon a design that they received that we spent a lot of back-and-forth time with USDA to make sure that all of the features were things that needed to be into satisfying the federal requirements. So, there, there might be an opportunity for a grant in the future. This grant doesn't sunset today, but it does, it does go away if the design goes away.
Chief?
I think one of the things about the price, and the selectman can correct me, this kind of sort of went out to bid earlier, but we had to stop the process while we waited for that grant. So, the prices that Cobb Hill has put together, it's not just from some estimating book from last year, this is from prices they got partially through bids that they have, that haven't been awarded, if you will, that are not, they're not signed by the town, but they've got some numbers back from contractors as to what they've agreed to do this at. So it's not, um, it's not some prices from last year that were used. This was just recent, and the, the contracts, the bids are still able to be signed as soon as this vote is completed, if you will. So it's not, uh, it's not a number that, uh, we should be terribly worried about, if you will, because these are based upon numbers that they got back when they requested prices.
Uh, I think that everybody knows how they want to vote. I'd like to call for a vote. Joe has called the question, if you will. Would all those who are in favor calling the question at this time, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, clearly we have the majority required. I'm gonna read the article, and I'm going to remind you, uh, as to how we're gonna vote here. This does not require an additional secret ballot vote. Article Five reads, "To see if the town," reads as amended, "to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,772,000 to build and equip a new police facility, further to authorize the withdrawal of $673,825 from a previously established police facility capital reserve fund, $341,063 to come from an awarded USDA grant, and $471,370 to come from the undesignated fund balance, $285,742 to be raised from taxes." This article is contingent on Article Four not passing. This article requires a majority vote. It's recommended by the Board of Selectmen, three to nothing, and by the Budget Committee, four to three. If we're ready to vote, all those in favor of Article Five as amended, please signify by raising your voting cards. All those opposed in a light manner. I would ask my three assistant moderators and their partners, we're gonna do a standing vote so that there is no question as to how this vote is being taken. All those, all those who are in favor of Article Five as amended, please raise your voting cards and keep them raised. I'm like holding the lanterns at camp, isn't it? You ready? Outside can, put your hands up. Outside can't. Do you, did you count the, the, uh, one of the risers?
Yes.
Okay. I'm ahead. Okay. Losing it here. All those who are not in favor of Article Five, please indicate by raising your voting cards and keep them up.
Hello?
The results on Article Five, apologize for delay. Article Five, there were 98 yes and 54 no. Article Five has passed. Article Six, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,000 to be added to the previously established police facility capital reserve fund." This article is contingent on Article Four and Five not passing. Do I have a motion?
I'll move Article Six.
Okay. Second. And do I have an additional?
I, I will move if we, uh, strike this article from the warrant.
Just a moment. Basically, Bill is saying he's making a motion to, uh, take this, uh, out of the warrant, to move the article onto the table, to dismiss it, make it go away. All those in favor of Article Six going away, please raise your cards. Thank you very much. All those opposed, thank you. Article Six is dismissed. Which brings us back to, are we, Article Fifteen, is that, Fifteen, thank you. Article Fifteen, "To see if the town will vote to establish a contingency fund for the current year for unanticipated expenses that may arise, and further to raise an appropriate $5,000 to be put in that fund. Said sum to come from the unassigned fund balance. Any appreciation left in the fund at year-end will lapse into the general fund. Majority vote is required, recommended by both the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee."
I'll move the article.
I'll second.
Rule two, second it. Are there any, uh, is there any discussion on Article Fifteen?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
This is a yearly article, for those of you who haven't been here before. It's a small fund to take care of unanticipated issues that might arise, as the, as the article says, and as it says, if it's not expended or a portion of it, it does go back into our general fund. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding Article Fifteen? You're ready to vote, "To see if the town will vote to establish a contingency fund for the current year for unanticipated expenses that may arise, and further to raise an appropriate $5,000 to put in the fund. Said sum to come from the unassigned fund balance. Any appropriation left in the fund at year-end will lapse into the general fund." All those in favor of Article Fifteen as written, please raise your voting cards. All those opposed in a like manner. The ayes have it, the article passes. Article Sixteen, Article Sixteen, "To see if the town would like to reinstate mixed paper recycling at the Tufton Borough transfer station commencing in 2022." Motion?
I'll move, Article Sixteen.
I'll second.
Go ahead, everyone.
A little background, uh, historically, we have recycled mixed paper in the town of Tufton Borough. Uh, a few years ago, when China no longer bought mixed paper from this country, the market for mixed paper went away, and the cost to recycle went to several hundred dollars a ton. At that time, the town stopped recycling mixed paper. Since that time, there have been some requests and some presentations related to restarting the recycling of mixed paper. Uh, it, it does not cost us several hundred dollars a ton to dispose of it anymore. Uh, the recent price for mixed paper recycling, uh, is, uh, it's actually paying $12 per ton. That was the main price, uh, we just received yesterday. Uh, the cost to the town to restart the recycling because, uh, it's a different level of quality required than what we did, did in the past, will involve, uh, some closed collection containers that we estimate will cost about $45,000 to purchase, uh, as well as, uh, additional labor to monitor the, the separation and collection of the paper. So, we estimate that the annual cost of reinstituting mixed paper collection will be somewhere between 60 and 75,000 dollars a year, uh, and the savings in disposal cost for diverting the mixed paper from the recent, from the, uh, solid waste stream will be about between $5,000 and $7,500 a year.
Are there any questions regarding this Article Sixteen? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote?
We have someone like to speak.
Uh, can you come to the microphone? Can't see you back. Ah, Sue?
Yes.
Yes. Sue is one of our taxpaying non-residents who was asked to speak to this issue, and I'm sure that we would like to hear from her.
Yes, my parents were residents of Tufton Borough for over 20 years. My family's been coming here in the summer since 1974, so I'm not exactly a newcomer. I don't necessarily accept these cost figures. I don't understand why the same number of employees were employed when we were recycling paper as employed now, so I don't understand why there are more employees needed. The cost of the solid waste has to include the labor of the person who sits there all day long, at least when I go there. And I don't know whether that savings is put in there at all. I just, I don't feel only strongly about the environment. I think this is an economic issue for, for Tufton Borough. I think it costs less to separate out mixed paper than to put it in the solid waste. And there is no income from solid waste, it is just expense. I have facts and figures up the kazoo, which I could share with you if you wanted to hear them, but for now, that's my statement.
Well, the numbers that Bill gave were just estimates, obviously. The question before you is, do you want to get back into the paper recycling business? It's no longer just all paper, it's selected paper that's marketable. It does take an additional amount of effort, but that's not the question before you. If you want to get back in the paper recycling business, then vote yes, and it will become part of the budget process that the Budget Committee will review. And at that point in time, you'll have a fixed number on what the actual cost is, and also some say as to whether or not you think that's excessive. But the question is only, do we want to recycle paper? That's the only question in front of you.
Gary?
I think that we definitely want to vote yes for this. And it's not for economic reasons. It's because the Budget Committee should look at the figures. And it will not look at the figures if we don't vote yes on this. Secondly, I'd like to say that I think that the labor that is being attached to this effort may be erroneous. It seems to me that part of the process of finding the real cost of doing this recycling should involve a revaluation of how the various function centers at the landfill are staffed. I think the former speaker correctly stated that we used to do this with the same number of people we have now, and I believe that it can be done. So that's something that, in my mind, needs to be explored. And again, it won't be explored if we don't vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Hackel again. I'd just like to add my voice of support to what Gary has said. And I think it doesn't always come down to dollars and cents. I think with our environment in the state of crisis that it is, I think that we need to be doing everything we possibly can to reduce and recycle and reuse. We need to turn a mental switch. And I think this, this is a very key part of that. And if we, it is going to cost us a little bit more to do the right thing, I think we really do need to go in that direction.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. My name's Marilyn Stacey. And the reason I would like to see the recycling of paper resume is because of the danger of identity theft.
Thank you. Sue?
Me again, me the non-voter again. One thing I forgot to say, which is all important in this. Unfortunately for me, your recycling program is voluntary. So if you don't believe in recycling paper, you don't have to do it. But those of us who are going to do it are going to be the most likely to follow whatever rules are set about what kind of paper we can and can't do. Now, as far as I know, nobody's checking right now that I am not putting shiny paper in the corrugated pile. We will be very careful to follow the rules because we are going to be the ones that care. If you don't care, throw it in the compactor.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments regarding this Article 16? Article 16. If you're ready to vote, I will reread the article. Article 16 is to see if the town would like to reinstate mixed paper recycling at the Tufton Borough Transfer Station commencing in 2022. All those who are in favor of Article 16 as red, please signify by raising your voting. All those opposed? Clearly, the eyes have it, and I declare Article 16 is passed. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to appoint two volunteer representatives from the town to serve on the Carroll County Broadband Communications District Planning Committee for the purpose of drafting a communications district agreement under our New Hampshire RSA Chapter 53-G colon 2, Communications District Planning Committee Formation and Responsibility.
I'd like to move the article.
Move the article?
I just did, yeah.
Yeah, just a second. Good, thank you. Keep this moving. Go ahead. Chip, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, this is an ongoing effort. The Carroll County Broadband Group, which has been meeting up in Albany, is finally getting a more structured planning commission together as more money comes forward, both state and federal, for the creation of widespread broadband access here in Carroll County. We need to have some control as to who owns it, how it's put in, and who gets it. Ideally, and I think the motivation by all members up there currently is that everybody gets broadband, it's not a selective installation. So we'd be looking for two volunteers. I can see a few that probably should volunteer as opposed to convincing. We're going to move forward, hopefully. And also simultaneously, the New Hampshire Electric Co-ops doing a broadband initiative as well, so looking better.
Are there any questions or comments regarding Article 17? Yes, Joe.
Yeah. I'd like to say I do not volunteer, but I'd like to vote on it now.
Is any other comments or questions regarding Article 17? Not hearing much. I will once again read the article to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to appoint two volunteer representatives from the town to serve on the Carroll County Broadband Communications District Planning Committee for the purpose of drafting a communications district agreement under NH RSA Chapter 53-G colon 2, Communications District Planning Committee Formation and Responsibility. Majority vote required. All those in favor of Article 17 as red, please raise your cards. All those opposed, signify in like manner, the eyes have it, the article is passed. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the Budget Committee recommended sum of $4,195,600 for general town operations. The selectmen recommended $4,196,100. This article does not include any special or individual warrant articles. Gordon, Chairman of the Gordon-Hunt Committee, would you like to speak to this article? Chairman of the Budget Committee, I should say.
I'll move the article. I know you're tired of hearing from me, but.
Articles moved? Seconded. Chairman of the Budget Committee, Gordon Hunt?
To be perfectly honest, it's been so long since I actually looked at this that refreshing my memory. I can tell you the difference between the recommended budget from the Budget Committee and the selectmen was they wanted to outbuild a location for the rectifier, but we decided it wasn't going to be needed.
Right up close to the microphone, we want to hear you.
Well, I'm not going to chew on it. I hope we're close enough now. It's a minimal increase in the budget this year. I had to applaud the selectmen for coming forward with reasonable numbers. And I'd be happy to answer any questions I can, as any part of the budget.
Are there any other comments or questions regarding the budget article? Article 18.
We're voting on the recommended budget from the Budget Committee, which was
Are we ready to vote? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the Budget Committee recommended sum of $4,195,600 for general town operations. The selectmen recommended $4,196,000. This article does not include any special or individual warrant articles. Majority vote required. All those in favor of Article 18, the budget article, please signify by raising your voting. All those opposed, signify in like manner. The eyes have it, I declare Article 18 to be passed. Article 19 is by petition to see if the town will vote to urge the New Hampshire General Court, which is obligated to redraw the maps of political districts within the state following the federal census, will ensure fair and effective representation of New Hampshire voters without gerrymandering. Additionally, these voters ask the town of Tufton Borough to urge the New Hampshire General Court to carry out the redistricting in a fair and transparent way through public meetings, not to favor a political party, to include communities of interest, and to minimize multi-seat districts. The record of this vote approving this article shall be transmitted by written notice from the Tufton Borough Selectmen to our state legislators informing them of the demands from their constituents within 30 days of the vote. This, as I said, is by petition. Anybody like to move this article?
I will move this article. I think it's, it's kind of like motherhood, it's.
We need a second. Okay, we've got a second. Go ahead.
Okay. This is simply, the town of Tufton Borough going on record is saying that the gerrymandering process can kind of skew how things are represented. And just to be doing it in a fair, open, and representative fashion, and just going on the record, is saying, do the right thing. And do it out in the open so everybody knows what's going on.
Thank you. I see our representative to the General Court, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn Cordell, one of your state representatives. I don't read this as a motherhood and apple pie statement. I view it as a political statement. It certainly appears to me that it is such, using words like gendering, gerrymandering, and demands from constituents certainly signify this to me as a political document. And the implication that the General Court would not be fair and transparent, and that I take a great exception to this warrant article and urge its defeat.
Thank you. Any other comments or criticisms or questions, I should say, regarding this article?
This is, what's his name again? But anyway, as I understand it, after each election, the party that's in power actually can call for redistricting. And this is in the laws of the state and the Constitution. So asking them not to do that, or to adjust the way they do it, is kind of useless because it's covered by the state laws and the federal laws.
Marilyn?
I agree with Glenn wholeheartedly. Not every woman can be a mullet.
Are there any other comments and questions regarding this article by petition? I'm going to forego reading the whole article again, I think you have the sense of it, unless somebody wants me to read it. All those in favor of the article as written? All those opposed? I think the article has failed. I see that it requires a majority, it does not have a majority, and I declare it failed. Article 20. This is also by petition. This warrant article is to have the town of Tufton Borough purchase property at North Country Village Cooperative, Inc., and each homeowner can purchase their lot parcel at the assessed value. Do I have a motion? I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second. She deserves the right to speak.
Thank you, Glenn. Thank you, Glenn. I'm the person who did this warrant article, and I did it to have a better way for the residents to save on taxes and for homeowners to be able to receive better town services. It does not mean that the mobile home park is going to sell anything tomorrow. It could be 15 years from now, who knows when? But it should be able to if they wish to. Thank you. Oh, and if anyone has any questions about it, I'll try to answer them.
Are there any questions that the voters have regarding this article? Yes?
My name is Peter Billings, and I am the president of the Board of Directors of North Country Village. To the best of my knowledge, no part of North Country Village is for sale.
I am aware of that. Doesn't mean it's going to stay that way.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding this article? Article 20. Go ahead, Susan.
I just question whether this is properly written so that it can be legally interpreted. Could we get some feedback from your attorney? How? I don't know how this gets.
Well, as you know, an article by petition, selectmen are not able to change any.
I know that, I know that. And I think this may be a good intended article, but I think it's very flawed that there's. I don't know what it means or how you would use it.
Barbara Lohman again?
Well, the way it's written, it would authorize the town to buy it, but it doesn't raise and appropriate any money for the town to do it. So my interpretation of it is that if in the future the town meeting wanted to buy the property, you'd still have to raise and appropriate the money to do it. It's simply an authorization to buy property that, as far as I know, is not for sale right now.
It takes a town meeting vote to authorize the town to buy property, and then at some point you have to appropriate the money to pay for it.
Thank you.
That's exactly what I'm intending to do.
Any other comments or questions regarding this article? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Rose Lacefield, and fortunately or unfortunately, I live at North Country Village. North Country Village is a cooperative. We receive plenty of services from the town of Tufton Borough, we're very thankful for that. And as far as I know, North Country Village Cooperative is not for sale.
I know you said it was for sale.
Are there any other, any other questions or comments regarding Article 20?
I would just like to wind up what she said there. This is a futuristic idea. I live there as well, and I'm not putting you on a three-minute timer what it's like to live there. So anyway, in the future, we could save tax monies if we sold certain areas of the property.
Hey, are we, we're ready to vote on Article 20? Article 20, this warrant article is to have the town of Tufton Borough purchase property at North Country Village Cooperative, and each homeowner can purchase their lot parcel at the assessed value by petition. All those who are in favor of Article 20, please signify by raising your voting cards. All those opposed, please signify in the same manner. The opposed, the nays have it, and I declare the article failed. At this point, are there any other comments for the good of the order, being the town of Tufton Borough?
I would just like to say that I have observed more than one lady knitting or doing needlepoint during the meeting, and I'm pleased to see it. Thank you, girls.
Any other comments for the good of the order? If not, I would be happy to entertain a motion to recess. Thank you very much. This moment, this meeting is almost in favor. Meeting is dissolved. Thank you very, very much.